Everyone, we'll go ahead and call to order the Thursday, October 22nd, 2020 meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sircena.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Nice to see everybody present and accounted for. Welcome, everyone. As we are now developing kind of a new tradition with the Pledge of Allegiance, our very able city clerk Matthew is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Matthew.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Matthew.
Welcome.
All right, we'll move to approval of the agenda. I've been made aware that we're going to remove two items from the consent agenda for discussion, and those are item AJ and AK. We'll remove those items for discussion, but I would take a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, and then we can discuss those others.
Move approval of the amended agenda.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, very good. Matt, are we going to hand this to you? Or who's leading on these two items?
Your honor, before we get to the items after the consent agenda, you still have the citizens' presentation first, and then we will get to the consent agenda and then those accompanying items that you just removed.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, so citizens' presentation, this is where anyone that's joining us on the meeting here virtually can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so? And if there is someone, please make yourself know to Pete, the cook, so he can get you plugged in so we can hear you.
Thank you, Mayor. And for folks participating by phone, the way to raise your hand and catch my attention is by hitting star nine. For folks who are participating using the video conference, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, you'll see a black bar with some icons in it. One of them is the participant icon. If you click on that, and then a separate screen will open, and you'll see the raise hand function. I'll wait for a moment to see if anybody needs to raise their hand. Would like to raise their hand? Okay, Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands go up.
Okay, seeing none, then we'll move now to consent items.
Move approval of the consent.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the bulk of the consent items is approved. Matt, back to you on item AJ and AK, please.
Thank you, your honor. Tonight, we've, staff would like the council to have some reconsideration, or at least remand of these two decision and orders that the Board of Adjustment decided on earlier this week. And I wanted to have Doug Olandy kind of take you through, starting with the Horizon Event Center item, and then with the Genesis Health Clubs, we did get some new information today that will kind of change some of staff's recommendation on that one. But we'll start with the Horizon Center one, letter AJ. And Doug, do you want to walk the council through this one, please?
Yes, thank you. The property owner at the Horizon Vent Center had requested consideration for a relatively large variance to the required parking, as they are continuing to look to evolve the existing Seven Flags Fitness Center building to a full-fledged 100% special events or conference type of a center. The request, as I mentioned, was for a very large number of parking stalls on the order of about 1,300 parking stalls that they were asking for a variance from. Additionally, they also were requesting consideration to allow for a nine-foot parking stall in lieu of the 10-foot parking stalls that are out there. And then they are also looking for concession on required landscape islands within a parking lot. The consideration was made by the board on the first part of the request, which was for the variance to the parking number of stalls required. The board denied that request. Following that action, they did make motions and did affirm the variances for the reduction in the parking lot or parking stall width, and the elimination of the required parking islands. Those two pieces are the ones that staff has some concern about, simply from the perspective of those are really not relevant, considering the action they took on the first, which was not granting the overall parking lot, parking stall variance. So from staff's perspective, we would ask that the city council remand their decision granting those variances, really to allow for the record to be appropriately managed, in terms of really those variances not being needed in this circumstance. Any questions on that one?
Okay. What's, Mayor, I think that you're muted. Sorry, sir.
Doug, it seems that your primary concern here is a matter of relevance from one to the other?
A matter of relevant, yes, a matter of relevance in terms of the parking lot width reduction. Specifically, the request was made for the special events center, but since the special events center isn't going to be able to be moved forward because of the denial of the first variance, the reduction on the dimensions makes us concerned that we're kind of opening up a pretty significant precedent for the rest of the community that is based on the 10-foot parking stalls. So we have had conversations with the property owner as we continue to seek to find ways to allow them to repurpose that building. And we've had conversations this morning, in fact, around this topic specifically. They are not intending to make modifications to the parking lot until we can come up with an overall plan for the property. So in essence, they don't have a desire for the variance that was granted either. So as I mentioned, this will simply allow us to go back, kind of clean up the record, and then work with the property owner to move forward with either a new plan that is in compliance with the regulations, or make a new variance request based on an alternative.
Thank you, Doug. Council questions? Well, I'm hearing no questions. I guess what's the desire of the council at this point?
Do we need to consider them individually or together?
Individually, please.
I would move that we remand this to the Board of Adjustment for action consistent with what staff has recommended.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael to remand further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, item AJ is remanded, then per staff recommendation. Matt, we'll move on to AK then.
I think so.
Yeah, Doug, go ahead, jump in on this one.
Sure. In this particular case, Genesis Fitness Center has made a request for a variance to allow for a larger building sign to be placed on the property, as well as some consideration for some other dimensional standards. The request itself was for a sign, a building sign, that was about three times what the allowable limit would have been. During the process of the Board of Adjustment's deliberation, the applicant amended their request and asked for a smaller variance. It would still be in excess of twice what they were allowed. That is the primary concern staff has, is the precedent-setting nature of allowing what would be one of the larger signs within the city in total. And upon reflection on that, and some additional conversation we had with the property owner again today, their actual need is substantially less than what they were presenting in front of the Board of Adjustment. Again, they were presenting a variance request to allow for a 288-square-foot building sign, when 100 square feet would be permitted by code. As I mentioned, through the reflection with them today, we have come to the understanding that their request is actually only for a 163-square-foot building sign, which is still in excess of what they were, what the code would allow, but substantially more in line with other previous requests that were granted by the board, and other signs within an area that have a similar configuration as this building. So upon that new information that we received from the applicant today, although we would certainly object to the idea of a two and a half or three times permitted sign, in actuality, their request, or what they would like to put on that building, is again, only 163 square feet. So we do not have any further concern at this point with this particular variance request.
So the desired action then, Doug, is what then?
In this particular case, unless council has concerns with a 163-square-foot building sign at this particular property, staff is satisfied with allowing the Board of Adjustment action to approve the variance to be accepted.
Mayor.
Michael, go ahead.
Doug, can you give me some examples of other ones? Because I've also, you know, been present over the years of some arguments on Hickman for signs that we have said no to for additional, or, you know, just away from Hickman. You know, there's a one up there by strip mall by the condos on Hickman, close to Casey's and such, we discussed at one time. And so I'm just trying to get a feel of the configuration we've allowed in the past. I agree with you, it's a slippery slope. I mean, I've been on these, at these meetings that we've held, most people in this sign ordinance has been vetted 10 times.
Sure. The issue with building signs, as you mentioned, has been vetted and addressed within the last year or so. What we did is allow for additional or larger building signs for those properties that are set back, the buildings are set back from the property lines a substantial distance. And in those cases, when the buildings are relatively large, in this particular case, the facility on Hickman is about 300 feet wide. It's a very wide, large building. And in this case, it is substantially set back from Hickman. Unfortunately, in this circumstance, the Hickman Road, Frontage Road, which is a public street, sits in between what would be the Hickman Road right-of-way and their property. So if you were to include that in terms of a practical distance from the street to the building face, it would nearly comply with the provisions of the code that allow for that larger sign on the large building. So we do feel that there are circumstances that make this property unique, and prevent, or at least mitigate, some of the concerns for precedent. Again, this property is very wide. It meets that standard for the additional sign area. It would not meet the setback standard because of the Hickman Road frontage. Very few other properties in the city would fit into that classification. So again, our concern for precedent is not as great as it would have been if this was a sign that was three times the size that is generally allowed.
Okay, and so the difference I might be talking about in the past is since though that, you know, those that we've denied, we've changed the sign ordinance.
We have certainly, you folks have recently modified the sign ordinance to allow more consideration for larger signs and number of signs, and given additional consideration for those types of properties which have very large buildings and deep setbacks. So the one that you're specifically referencing, you know, I don't recall off the top of my head, you know, the specifics of that case, but I suspect they probably by right at this point have the ability to get a little additional signage, as do most properties in Clive, based on the action that you took to amend the code.
Okay, all right.
Doug, does the record need to be cleaned up? I mean, it refers to that, what, 288-square-feet request?
Ideally, I agree with you. The record would be better served to reflect the smaller sign, in consideration of the property owner. That does result in about a 30-day delay for their ability to practically get that sign built and installed, because it would have to go back before the Board of Adjustment. They have made the sign permit request. We will issue that, or in this thought process, we would issue that, which would then limit their sign to the 12 by 16 that was discussed and found acceptable by the board. Ideally, we'd take it back, but practically speaking, I think we're all right.
Is there some way to append something to the minutes or decision to indicate that? Actually, what was granted?
I think we certainly could, to try to reflect, again, that conversation from the applicant. We can probably get something in writing from the applicant, kind of making that request, and somehow including that within the final record.
So the action to be made is then to approve and accept AK then, with a recommendation that the latest information be incorporated into the record? Would that be what we'd want to do?
That sounds appropriate.
Then I'll move that.
That's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there any further discussion?
I would just mention for a later discussion that, I guess it worries me a little bit, some of these are, you know, getting considered or passed, when really that's not the intent. I get the board's autonomy and all that, but intent of the council's direction is, seems like it's being quite circumvented in a couple of the cases, but another discussion another day.
Thanks, Michael. Other discussion, council? Hearing none of the council, please vote. That passes five to zero to move that forward, per staff's recommendation. And that wraps up consent items. Very good. We'll move now to presentations. The first one is the introduction of buildings, of our new building inspector. And Ryan, why don't you come forward and make that nice introduction?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm happy to introduce to you our new building inspector, who will be starting the end of October, October 30th. Dan Last is going to be joining our team as an inspector. Just a couple of notable things about Dan. Dan has been in the construction industry as a superintendent for roughly 20 years. The guy's only 39 years old, so 20 years with basically one company has shown quite dedication, you know, as an individual to a specific company. So we're excited to have Dan with the team. In addition to that, Dan has built eight houses for Habitat for Humanity in his journey through construction, which I think is also notable, as Dan, you know, definitely shows that he's out to serve the greater good. So we're excited to have Dan here. Dan, are you unmuted? Where you could say hi to the council?
Yes, I am. I'd like to thank everybody, and I'm excited for the opportunity.
Dan, great to have you onboard. Appreciate hearing about your history and your record, and great work with Habitat. Really nice to see that. And so thank you for that, and we'll look forward to working with you. Council, any questions or comments for Dan?
Yeah, I see you've got a welding degree and background. Perhaps we could utilize you and other departments as well.
You bet. That'd be great.
Well, Dan, again, welcome aboard. Thank you. And Ryan, thank you for making the introduction this evening.
Thanks, Mayor and council.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we'll move now to the second presentation, and this is a process improvement from Information Technology and Public Works, and Corey Phillips is going to lead us in that discussion. Corey?
Yes, hello, Mayor. How are you?
I'm well, sir. Thank you. Good to have you.
Thanks. I'm actually, I have Jerry Freestone with Public Works start this, start this one off for us. And I will share a screen for us. All right.
All right. Hey, go ahead, Corey.
No, go ahead, Jerry. You're fine. Go for it.
I'm meeting council and mayor. So our process improvement this year is a joint project between, what was a Public Works problem that the technology services helped us to solve. We had our LED bulb, the red, yellow, and green bulbs and arrows that the traffic signals use. We have a program where we replace them on a schedule, and the old way of tracking it was a spreadsheet that was developed maybe before I even started with the city. And I had my 20 years last May, so it's a rather old spreadsheet. It was very complicated and cumbersome to use. It was very, very hard to keep track and know where we needed to go next year, and how many bulbs we needed to order for the following year, and to track it correctly. Everything was handwritten in the field, and then brought back and inputted into our GIS system. So there was a lot of room for error. Hey, Corey, you want to go to the next sheet?
Yep. I didn't have the other one. I just have this one. So this one kind of shows, this one's kind of high level on each, basically it shows the intersection, and then how many of each bulb is at the intersection, but that's really all it tells you. So we needed a better way to manage actual warranty dates and manufacturing years and everything there is to know about the bulbs.
Yeah, part of the problem was is we would say one of them burned out at 86 in Hickman. And in the following year, that intersection was due for replacement. Well, all the bulbs needed replaced, except for we really didn't need to replace that one, but the spreadsheet said we're supposed to do them all. There's really no good way of tracking them. And to read the serial number, if you can read it, has the date code built into it, but it's, you've got to understand what you're reading to be able to understand what the date code is, and the warranty, how much warranty would be left in the bulb. And that's where Corey with collector and a lot of programming created a new, a new way for us to track it better.
Yeah, so Jerry came to me. We have a process where we are tagging all of our stop signs and signs in the city with barcodes, and we're scanning them in with our existing iPads that the city owns. And we, when we do that, we're collecting it so that way we know where to put a sign back when it gets hit by a car, you know, a stop sign gets taken down, we know where to put it. So Jerry goes, hey, these stoplights have, these bulbs have barcodes on there. Can we scan those in and utilize that information? And I was like, I don't know if we can, but let's try and let's find out. So when you scan that barcode, you get this really long string. Once you learn how to decipher that, there's your part number, and then you have a date code, and it's in year, and then the 007 would be the day of the year. So it's not way helpful unless you know how to translate that. And then we have a serial number. So what I was able to do was break out a code and break these pieces apart. So we have a serial number, then the date code. So we're able to actually take these numbers and make an actual date out of it. And then we have our part number. And from the part number, it's really useful, because then, based on that manufacturer's list, we can tell, we can tell the color, the arrow, is it tinted? Basically, anything we need to know about it. And so that is what this script, it's a couple, I would say 500 or so different bulbs that we had to program into there. And so that is what that program looks like. And so we had to send the guys out in the field to go collect all of these. So they went to every intersection, and we put the light bulbs in every intersection without anything in the barcodes, and they went in and just scanned each one. So this is a section head that has three in it. And this is DOT one, so it's actually, there should be a number four there, because you should have four bulbs. So let's go to this one. There's three there. Actually, let's see here. I'm probably on my, so you have the bulbs, and it shows you the section numbers. And they went in and scanned it, and there's the barcode, and there's the barcode part number. The LED and color type is not in here, because these are a brand that we're retiring, so we didn't want to have multiple brands in there. So the coolest part about this is we build a dashboard. And so after they're all scanned in the system, we have every intersection in there. Jerry knows exactly how many of each bulb we have in the city, how many, what count of each type. Well, I can say how many are due to be replaced in next year, '21. So I can type in 2021, apply it, and I know 160 bulbs need to replace next year, exact count of the types, and then I know exactly where they go out in the field. So we can actually order the correct amount every single year when the bulbs expire.
It's pretty slick. Jerry, so what's the average cost of one of these bulbs?
The, well, you would ask me that. When I say they're about $60 to $68 a piece, depending on the color. The current warranty on the bulbs we're buying is 15-year warranty. So at 15 years, we choose that they are out of warranty, so they're out of life, and we replace them. And then one of the things that Corey hasn't quite, hasn't touched on yet, if we do have one burnout, now that we have this system, when we go and change that single burnout bulb, for whatever reason it burned out, maybe a lightning strike or something caused a failure, or just a simple failure, we will change it out in the system as we change it out in the field. Because the guys have the iPads with them when they go out to the field. There we are. They'll pull it up. We happen to be working on this one in this, on this day. So they'll pull that, say it's a yellow bulb in that, in that particular lane head. We'll pull it up. We will change the, we'll edit it. We'll scan in the new barcode. And it will replace what was there, and done. It, that is correct. There's no transferring of data from paper being, you know, inputted on a rainy day. When we're done replacing that bulb, we have updated the system.
And what I did there is I was pretending to be Jerry on a dashboard here, and saying, my crew's there at that intersection working. I need to replace a bulb. I changed that to replace, and they have a replacement map out in the field that only highlights the ones that highlights the ones that need to replace and it shows the exact color. So then I can actually, I saved one since I don't have a barcode scanner on my computer here. And so they're out there in the field, they could actually edit that. They could actually scan that and edit it and it would actually change that date. I'm actually doing this one here, just, so if I go to the correct bulb, the green arrow there, replace it, edit. Let's see here, there's the barcode, paste it in there. And now when you look at it, the, you can see the warranty expiration date will change once it refreshes. Once you go to the green arrow, there it is, and now you can see 2029. It happened to be the seventh day of 2019 is when it was manufactured. So that was an easy one, but, so it automatically on the fly calculates the next expiration date.
That's a neat dashboard.
Yeah, we used it. Yeah, we, we used it this year because what, we didn't order the proper amount. What we did is we had a palette of a bunch of red light bulbs and a bunch of whatever type bulbs. So I did it in reverse and I said, we have red light bulbs, now show me where they're at and then now I can say, show me what year. And so these are the oldest ones and let's say we had 30 in a palette, well, I can replace those 18 oldest and a few of these from 2018. So I can get closer to being on target of having all my light bulbs replaced that, that are expired.
Outstanding. Now, Council, questions or comments for?
Quick comment and that's obviously super cool. You know, one of the things I like best about this is the fact that we're working across departments. Too often in big organizations, you know, we can get caught up in our silos and have blinders on and, and so the fact that we're working across departments is tremendous in my opinion, so great job.
I think other cities would like to follow your lead.
Yeah, great point there.
We actually got the.
Another agency would like to follow your lead.
You know, guys, the Public Works won the Build a Better Mouse Trap Award a couple years ago with the way they replace street signs and this looks to be an excellent candidate for a great process, a great tool for other cities as well to enter into that contest. Great piece of technology, very helpful.
Other comments, Council? Well, guys, great job here. Pretty impressive. You might figure out a way to copyright this dashboard that you built. But it, you know, it really is amazing though, when you think about something as simple as changing bulbs. And it adds up pretty quickly when you, when you, you change them throughout the city. And we're talking about a lot of dollars here and I think a lot of time. And this is really impressive, so great work and thanks for sharing it with us and hopefully you'll be able to maybe share it with others in the future, so.
So do we know how many Public Works employees it takes to change a light bulb? Don't get baited into answering that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards for that one. Great job, guys. Thanks again and best of luck to you as you continue to implement this, this great process. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move to action items now. The first item is a resolution approving purchase proposal with All Makes Incorporated on the Public Safety Center Project Furniture Acquisition and Installation Services, the amount of $295,845.17. And Matt, you'll lead us in this one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off and I'll also have Angie Funku here as our owner's rep to, it was really her working through the details on this with the chiefs as we were selecting, going through the RFP process to select our furniture vendor. So included in the packet provided a lot of background in terms of how we got to this point with an initial RFP based on kind of some initial schematics of the building. Went through an interview process, went to showrooms for three of the top candidates firms here locally and made a decision to work with All Makes on the detailed proposal for the building and then worked through a number of items and started to identify even in some cases, some situations where some millwork that was originally planned for the building was changed out to furniture to give us more flexibility. And through all that work then got down to a detailed proposal that's before you tonight of a little under 300,000 to be the main office furniture for the public safety facilities, Public Safety Center. Again, included a lot of information in the packet. Also in the packet, you see kind of the details of some of the various items that will be included in the facility in terms of layout and different kind of furniture that Angie worked through with both of the departments to find something that worked the best for us. Again, just showing some of the images here. But we, this is one of a number of equipment related contracts that'll be coming forward related to the facility. This is likely the largest one that you will see as the office furniture is a substantial investment for the new building, but we are happy to bring this forward to you under budget in terms of what our preliminary budget was at, saw some aggressive proposals from the various furniture manufacturers and this also includes installation of the furniture when the building is ready for the furniture to be installed. So would recommend your approval and Angie or I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Council, for Matt or Angie?
Matt, I may have missed, oh, we, never mind, I see it now, 325 was our original budget.
Correct.
My bad, somehow I missed that. Okay, thank you.
How do the warrants, the warranties stack up on this particular proposal with the other ones?
So these actually have similar warranties to everyone else. Their parts and replacement warranty was actually better than, than the other ones and they are local to Des Moines. They're based out of the East Village downtown, so they're super easy to work with and overall all the warranties were very similar.
Who's the manufacturer on the materials?
It's all steel. So it's All Makes is who we're buying from and it's an all steel product.
Move to the resolution.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion?
I did have a quick question and I was just interested in hearing what consideration was given to the furniture surfaces and flexibility given the ongoing need for hygiene that's likely over the upcoming years.
Yeah, that's a great question, Susan, and we did take that into account. Initially, we had more fabric based seats and we've gone to vinyl, which looks like leather, but it's a vinyl product, super easy to wash, you know, for stains or spills, but also for any germ type things that we're in currently. And then we've gone to mesh backs for everything. The only place we have fabric is in the offices for the guest chairs and those will be not used often, but otherwise everything is a washable vinyl. We moved away from some of the millwork and turned it into furniture so that it is more movable should spaces need to be set further apart again. And so that's you, I think you saw that in the note, but that's why the millwork decreased and some of the furniture increased is because we went to more movable furniture as well. And in this configuration, a lot of these people have offices too. So our open office space is not like what you would see in a corporate office. So we do have the flexibility to move people around in that open office area.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you just say that you have mesh backing for the chairs inside the police questioning room for our guests?
No, I did not say that.
Oh.
The, the, we have mesh back.
Yes, these days.
Sorry. No, we have mesh backing everywhere on the chairs. In the questioning area, it's a durable piece of furniture that's easily wipeable. It's vinyl on the seat and the back.
Thank you.
Other questions, Council? Well, Angie, I would say you and team, great job. You would think of something like furniture and a lot goes into that, to that process and that vetting, so great work here. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further questions, will the Council please vote? Item passes five to zero. Thank you, Angie and Matt on that and we're going to move to action item number two, which is a resolution approving contract with Terricon Incorporated for construction, testing and inspection services for the Public Safety Center project. Matt, you lead?
Yeah, I'll lead off on this one and Angie will help out as well. Material testing and inspection, very important part of the Public Safety Center project to make sure we're getting quality concrete, materials on the site as it's installed. This is important to have the relationship direct with the owner on these as they're reviewing materials and testing concrete and the construction manager, DCI and Angie went through an RFP process to identify a firm to work with on this and included in the packet were the details of that process. I know it's a little bit atypical when you see we're recommending the person, the team in the middle, but this is really an estimate of cost and estimate of hours and I'll let Angie talk a little bit more detail of why we felt the Terricon proposal was the one we would like to recommend. Angie?
Yeah, so Terricon did the geotechnical services on the site before we did demo this winter, so they have greater knowledge of the site. Terricon is kind of the go-to inspection service in Des Moines. They're very reputable. They have comps from all around the site as well. So some of their back history gave us reason to, to look at them a little bit more closely. And then also they really dug into the schedule. They called DCI and asked questions and they, we believe that their fee is more an accurate proposal of reflection of what we're actually going to be doing on the site between concrete strength, steel strength, paving, all of those things. We believe that they dug into this a little bit more and their hourly rates were very similar to the other two firms. It's just that they had a better handle on what the scope of work actually was, in our opinion.
Other questions, Council, for Angie or Matt?
Move to resolution.
Second.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Hearing none, will the Council please vote? That item passes five to zero. Thank you, Angie, again.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move to action item number three then, and this is a resolution approving a letter of agreement with Metro FiberNet LLC, fiber to the premises deployment. Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Back at your September 10th meeting, we had a representative from Metronet presenting their proposed project of a citywide build out of a fiber network for both residents and businesses. And I know the Council had a number of questions during that discussion and some that, that Joe, who was the representative of that time from Metronet on the call, needed to follow up on. We have Kathy Schuler is on the call with us tonight. She's the Governmental Affairs Director for Metronet and she provided the answers to the questions that I, we included in the packet for your information, including, and I know this was one specific request of some history, market history for areas where Metronet's been in at least three years in terms of pricing history of their products and showing that in terms particularly related to internet access. So we wanted to make sure we were following back up on the Council's questions at the September 10th meeting and also in the meantime, staff and Metronet had been going back and forth on a letter of agreement that's included in your packet tonight to really establish the relationship. Again, this isn't a contract for service by any means because Metronet has the right to install these facilities in our community. It's just understanding that this is a significant build and a significant project that is going to require oversight on the behalf of city staff in terms of working in the right of way that it was appropriate to outline the terms and kind of commitments from each party, both on Metronet and the city in terms of how we would work through this. Happy to report, at least in that letter of agreement, we had a really good dialogue with Metronet and introduced a few new items that you won't see in the City of Urbandale and City of Johnston's letter of agreement. Additions that staff proposed related to co-location in particular. The co-location section of the letter of agreement was a specific ask that I had of if, as Metronet is installing their network in our community, if at the same time the city has identified a gap, for example, in our own fiber network that the city controls and maintains specifically interconnects our facilities and a lot of our traffic signal systems, if we've identified a gap where they're also going to be installing conduit for their own network that we would work together and that at just an incremental cost for installing an additional conduit on behalf of the city that we would pay for that and there'd be a co-location opportunity for us as long as we identified that upfront to Metronet. So I think that's a big benefit for us as a part of taking advantage of the major installation that Metronet is looking at doing and staff will be working on this and we'll be talking more about it as our work with HR Green and our co-location policy and, and gaps in our network that we may want to consider while they're doing their installation. Another section that I'm happy with is, is really solidifying their commitment in terms of 90% coverage of those areas of the city that are, do not currently have fiber to the home options. I am aware that my fiber has started to do some installations in the community on the far west end and kind of the Shadow Creek area so that, that neighborhood has already been served related to at least residential fiber to the home. So, but 90% of those other areas and those areas not, when you see in the agreement when it says privately owned, those are, for example, like a town home association where the infrastructure, the roads are privately owned. It all depends if the, you know, the town home association would have to work directly with Metronet for that because it's not necessarily city right of way. So I'm really happy with the coverage that at least that is being presented to you all in this agreement. And I think what's pending your support for this and just kind of the commitments between the two parties of what staff would do pending your approval for me to sign this agreement, we would be really working really hard with these other neighboring cities to put some communications together to help our, our residents and businesses kind of understand the size and the scope of this project and what it might look like for a boring rig, for example, to be in the right of way in a residential neighborhood. That's not something that our residents will be very much used to. In fact, they probably have never seen it before in a residential area. And so there's just a lot of public education that we want to do and communication coordination with the other communities that Metronet is looking at doing this project in, which includes Urbandale, Johnston, Windsor Heights, and I'm hearing that Grimes is considering a similar letter of agreement next week at their council meeting. So this really lays out those relationships and then it also allows Public Works staff for us to start working on a kind of a plan of how we're going to manage the, just the sheer size of right of way applications and right of way oversight effort for 2021. The, the letter of agreement does say two years, but that of course is, you never know with weather and what may happen that giving the Metronet wants some flexibility that it might take two years, but their target is really to try to do this in a year. And so from a staffing standpoint in Public Works, we want to make sure we're planning for that and, and putting the resources to make sure we have proper oversight of this construction project in our community. So I know I rattled through a lot of things there, but just wanted to kind of provide an overview of what we're, we were looking to accomplish here and I know Kathy is also on, on the meeting tonight if you have any questions for Metronet. But with that, staff would recommend approval of the letter of agreement.
Council, questions for Matt or others thereon?
Matt, who is our point person from the city from say a right of way or tactical expertise with Metronet?
So it was a, it was a combination of our Public Works staff, Jeff May and Jerry Freestone, who was. who was, who you just heard from. And then also, we received some additional technical assistance from Ed Barrett at HR Green, provided some good recommendations, particularly related to the co-location element that we have proposed. They provided some, some language and some assistance with that.
Who's the resolution?
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion, council?
Just a quick follow-up, Matt, on the discussion of the education, because I think it's going to be a big part of this.
I agree, yeah.
Is Metronet, you know, are they assisting in this education side, both through platforms and financially? Because this is going to be a major undertaking, both cost and platforms of getting this news out. Is this a true partnership? Or is that all on us?
I, I will offer some comments and let Kathy speak a little bit more to the Metronet side. But my understanding is, is Metronet's built a pretty substantial communication project management platform for residents to find out information and be educated on the project. I would see it as a partnership in terms of us making sure that certain story is told from the city's perspective in terms of our role in this, which is, again, just really education and oversight. But I would see it as a partnership, but I would definitely want to have Kathy kind of speak a little bit more to Metronet's role in all of this. Kathy?
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Your Honor, members of council and city staff, I'm Kathy Scheller. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Metronet. And what a, what a wonderful question that is, because as Matt has mentioned, this is a 90% infrastructure build for the City of Clive. What we have, council member, is a very detailed construction communication plan that we enroll with every city that we take on this undertaking of bringing a true fiber optic platform to the cities that we serve. What we will do is work with staff in Clive to make sure their residents are aware of what it means to have a public right-of-way, what it means to install this fiber optic infrastructure, what it means to do so. We are not saying, please buy Metronet. This segment of our construction communication is truly about educating the residents of who the people are in their yard. It's truly a partnership. We will work very, very closely with city staff to ensure that your residents note to the best of their ability what is happening in the public right-of-way. We give educational materials as to what is a public right-of-way. Our crews are clearly marked that they are Metronet. We work with each city, because every city that we work in is different. So we will work with the appropriate staff at Clive to ensure that we are getting out the message to the individual residents as we begin this enormous project. We do send every resident, before we go into a particular area, a letter. We send them a postcard on us, not Clive being, you know, no, no cost to you, on who we are, how the construction procedure occurs. I encourage each of you, once we're done with this meeting this evening, to just Google "Metronet Construction," and what will pop up is our construction communication website. That website will enable residents in Clive, they'll just click on Clive and be able to have a whole map that will come up and show exactly where residents, where Metronet is currently deploying fiber, where we plan on doing so in the future. It gives them the opportunity to look at videos of what it takes to bring fiber optic infrastructure in, gives them a chance to ask questions. As I told Matt and members of staff early on in discussions, our goal is to take as many calls away from City Hall as possible. We actually have a measurement system that in coming months that Matt and members of staff will be able to report back to council, whereby if a resident calls our 800 number or asks a question on our construction communication website, we will be able to give you how quickly we responded to those residents, when the resolution occurred, how much fiber we've deployed in Clive in any given month. It's very, very detailed, and something I've been with the organization almost seven years, that I'm extremely proud of, because it has a measurement factor. So moving forward, if council has a question to Matt or members of staff, is how is Metronet doing, he will have precise information. What were the natures of the calls? How much fiber was there? For all of you to be able to absorb that and give feedback. So yes, we will be working very, very closely with Clive to ensure that we are letting residents know what is happening in an educational purpose only for this fiber optic deployment.
Kathy, if I could just tag on with a quick question. So as you're rolling through the city into different neighborhoods, as part of that communication platform, that reach out to the next, to the next neighborhood and say, you know, we're coming, you can anticipate seeing us, anticipate us being there for X period of time. I know you can't hold yourself specifically to timeframes, but just to, you know, we've got a 30, I would see that we have a 30,000-foot communication platform, you know, then something closer to 5,000 or 10,000 feet with city communications via newsletter, online and, and social media. And then your boots on the ground, you know, communication platform. And it's just going to be really important that our residents, A, have enough time to absorb what's coming, and then a place to, to, to reach out to immediately with questions. But then for the next, for the neighbors and the next, the next project to know when you're going to be arriving and what's happening. Is, is that a kind of a fair assessment of what you're doing? Or maybe you can clarify a little bit?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. So what we have, our construction project manager, and you will have a project manager, the entire project for Clive dedicated to your city, that construction manager will have a construction schedule. We begin reaching out to residents in a cyclical fashion, 30 days before we even come in to a particular neighborhood. It's a very strategic way that we deploy the fiber optics. We're very transparent in our communication with city, but rest assured that we'll be letting the next neighborhood know when we're coming, well before we're finished with the first, you know, the neighborhood that we're currently in. So yes, it's very strategic, Mayor. And it's something that we will work very closely with staff to make sure that for the residents of Clive, we are adhering to protocol accordingly.
Very good. Glad to hear that. Council, other questions for Kathy or for Matt on the agreement?
Mr. May, I'm sorry. You know, I had a lot of questions last time, and I still do after reading it. I get that they're coming into town, they'll notify the neighborhoods and the neighbors. But quite frankly, it's really not a choice of the neighbors. I mean, isn't that correct? Whether my neighbors, any of us on my block or not sign up, it's rolling through the neighborhood. And the fiber's going to be out there. Is that right?
That would be correct, Councilmember McCoy. And it depends on what side of the street. So one thing to make council aware, that's in our current policies and procedures related to right-of-way and these fiber permits, is we do not, we don't allow fiber to be installed on the water main side of our street. And so with Metronet's proposed installation, at least our conversations with their construction team, that is actually their preferred method of installation, is they typically install on one side of the street and then run drops to either side. So yes, there is definitely the potential that this will be installed, similar to, you know, MediaCom and CenturyLink infrastructure. It is in the street regardless of if that particular resident is utilizing those services or not.
So in a typical contract fashion, right? I've read some of the Iowa code, but that's all the legal background I have, as John knows. It's very small. But I, I do typically think that a contract has to give two sides, right? I have to be getting, you have to be giving, for it to be a contract. I mean, is that kind of the basics behind contract law, maybe? But what is Clive getting from this contract?
What I would offer, Councilmember McCoy, is the City of Clive, our residents and businesses are getting the opportunity to have access to gigabit internet access across the entire community. We currently do not have that capability from the current legacy providers. And what Metronet is offering is both an economic development tool for our businesses, which I know our businesses are asking for, to have more options, and it's installation of that type of, of kind of market-driven competition that is at no cost to the city other than our staff time to oversee the installation of construction. So I guess I would offer this, and it's kind of laid out in the letter of agreement, of what Metronet is committed to in terms of the installation of this 90%, you know, citywide network, is what the City of Clive is getting.
Okay. I, I'm missing it, but because I think I keep going back to, they're rolling through regardless.
Yeah, so, Michael, let me just interject here. And that's a very valid point. This happens to be an economic development project that we can't necessarily approve or disapprove based on what the state law is, and maybe even the federal law. I don't know that. But, but what we can do is work with the provider to put together what we have before us, which is a letter of agreement, talking about the oversight, expectations, et cetera, everything that's laid out before us. So hopefully, there's no surprises. But yeah, you're correct. This is, this is something that, and I think Matt's been pretty vocal about this throughout our discussions, is this is something that any fiber provider could come in and do and pull permits on. What we really want to be able to do is, is manage that process as smoothly as possible for our staff, for our facilities, and for our residents.
So can I just get an assurance from Metronet that, you know, in all their communications, and I get the communications, right? If you're going to roll through a city, you're going to communicate like that, you're going to communicate forward, because it's a sales pitch, right? And I understand that. It's a, well-played, right, on how you do it, and you pick up customers by telling them, I'm coming through. And those that haven't had a choice for a long time, sign up. And, you know, two things. I'd like to hear, you know, if you're not satisfied with the replacement work Metronet does, what are the, what is the city staff repercussions or repair to help me as a resident? And two, and this will be my last two questions, too, is I'd like some solid assurance that on every card going out, and every letter going out, on the internet, wherever they're posting this stuff, that it clearly talks that Clive is not endorsing Metronet in any way. It doesn't say we do, but I'd like it to say clearly, we do not. Because it's inferred by many, when we roll through a city, putting it in and digging up their front yards, and, hey, we're here to help. It's inferred we're there endorsing it.
Councilmember, again, Kathy Scheller here. I'd just like to address that. So what we do is, clearly, when we talk about the communication piece, we certainly understand the importance of restoration. We certainly understand that this type of a, again, what does Clive get? You get a multi-multi-multi-million dollar investment in true fiber optic. Now more than ever, especially in the world of COVID, to be able to have a fiber optic connection that has limitless broadband capabilities is something that is going to be great for your city. We will definitely, in all of our communication, it does not say that your city endorses us. What we do is we let them know educationally.
It does not say it does not endorse it.
What it is, is a letter that states who we are and what we're doing. It has no mention of Clive endorsing or not endorsing. We will not put in the letter, Clive does not endorse this. We will leave that to the residents. You, you want, you want us to make a multi-multi-million dollar investment in Clive, and you want us to say that you don't endorse us? Why wouldn't you endorse us? I look, I've looked, and you support businesses coming in.
Look, I like the project, but last I know, we did not engage with you. So we, you know, the multi-million, multi-million, multi-million is appreciated. I also know there might be two or three more companies coming in behind you, tearing up the yard at other times. But again, the inference of that happening is going to be that, I guess I don't know why you say this is no endorsement of Clive. Why does that matter? I mean, because we don't endorse one company.
No, absolutely not, sir. And I, and I totally agree with you on that. We are a non-exclusive provider that is coming in with a true fiber optic connection to your homes and businesses. I certainly understand that, absolutely. And then, and quite frankly, I've dealt with, we have served over 90 municipalities in the country, and I certainly understand your position on that. And I certainly understand that you cannot choose anyone over anybody. And our materials do not infer that, to answer your question.
Correct. So then, the answer, you will not, I mean, you're not willing to, to put that on there. Second is, which I haven't heard, is the remedies. The remedies that we have as a resident or the city to repair what is not done correctly or satisfactory to the resident. I haven't seen that spelled out or addressed, is my first question.
So I will, again, refer back to the measurement factor of a construction communication tool. So if a resident is not satisfied with the restoration that is provided by Metronet, they will reach out to us. We will work to restore whatever that person has a question about. The good thing about it is, and I mentioned this earlier, is that when Matt comes to council, or members of staff come to council, once we start this project, if you're getting an abundance of residents that are saying, "Metronet is not restoring correctly." "Metronet is not doing this," there's a measurement tool in place. A ticket is created for any inquiry that Metronet gets during the construction communication process. So you will be able to know if we are not restoring correctly. And quite frankly, I'm very proud of that aspect of our organization, in that what we understand is this. If we go into a community and tear it up and do not restore correctly, that is not going to behoove us to come in and make the investment that we are. So moving forward, you will be able to see exactly what the Clive residents are reaching out to Metronet about. We are going to be able to have monthly reporting options with staff to discuss that. And if we are not upholding our end of the deal, that will be markedly in place with staff and with council.
But no remedy?
Pardon? I'm sorry.
No remedy by staff or council.
No, we will take care of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the remedy is, this is that we have, that we have clear communication from a resident that, that can reach out directly to Metronet, maybe without, maybe with our assistance or not, who knows? But that from inquiry to, to satisfaction of whatever the issue is, it's a, it's a minimal timeframe. It's smooth communication, and everybody's accountable. But ultimately, the remedy is to make sure whatever restoration or whatever the issue happens to be, is taken care of and taken care of quickly, to the satisfaction of the resident. And I think, you know, Kathy, I think you can understand, these are just natural concerns of ours. We want to make sure that our residents are just taken care of us, and any city does. So I think that's why these things are being brought up. I think that probably most of this is transparent in the process itself. But I guess I would just share that, you know, this is something that we're really going to pay close attention to, and we, we trust in you to do what you tell us you're going to do. And, you know, then we take it from there. And certainly, if that doesn't happen, that doesn't bode well for Metronet. And that's, you're the ones making the investments. So I, so I trust that that is, is, is going to occur. And just, I think to Councilmember McCoy's point, this is just something we're really going to pay attention to as we move into the process, because that's, that's what we need to do. I don't know if there's any more.
I just want to say, excuse me, Mayor, I just want to say, Mayor and Councilmember McCoy, I certainly understand that, and I appreciate your due diligence in making sure that the residents of Clive are taken care of. I would be a miss if I, as a resident of my town, did not have council members or representatives that did so for me. So again, I appreciate that. And I, and I hope that you will work with us on this, and do you hold us accountable for our work. Thank you.
I think legal counsel could probably address that issue.
Well, I will add, I guess, a couple. Sure, I'll add a couple.
Sure, I'll add a couple. I guess a couple observations. We had a chance to review right from the legal staff the Metronet agreement. And while the letter of agreement is not necessarily a requirement, because this is a private-to-private relationship, and by all means, I'd ask the Metronet gal to go ahead and chime in if I'm if I'm misunderstanding the the relationship. But, you know, the every individual citizen has that right to determine whether they want these services or not. Just like any sort of vendor has that right in our right of way to deploy these sorts of services. They are very expensive. It is certainly an economic development draw, and from a perspective of the city, there is value there. We do have checks and balances through our code, through our policies, through our regulations, and those rights were reserved, just for everybody's awareness, in the letter of agreement. The city did go ahead and and just reemphasize that, you know, nothing in that agreement supersedes any of the policies or regulations that you already have in place, and that those will be consistently enforced. And I think, you know, Metronet accepted all of those changes and proposals. You know, as far as remedies for some of those concerns, those, that is a private-to-private relationship if if a citizen's not satisfied with the product. But, you know, the city is put in the middle of these sorts of things routinely, and so we wanted to just make that conversation very clear.
And the problem I have with that, Christina, is that it is not an agreement between, and I'm, and this is nothing against Metronet. It could be, you know, XYZ Company tonight. But it truly isn't an agreement between me and Metronet. I have no choice that they tear the my front yard up. And then I have no remedy to go after because, sure, I I can get my own legal counsel, but I can't afford the legal counsel. And so that's that's frightening for a lot of people. And I'm not saying it happens with Metronet or not, but we've seen it happen with many, many, many companies that have come into the right of way. And we spend a lot of time and money at the right of way issues. And so I I have an issue, and I get legally, right, that that is the stance, that it is an issue private-to-private. But I really don't even have a choice on any of it. And my remedy is a lawsuit? That's crazy. But again, it's it's, I get the agreement. We have no choice in it. It just doesn't sit well.
Well, that is so noted, Councilmember McCoy. So I think that, again, this is good discussion, and I and I think appropriate discussion about about these kinds of arrangements, but they are, they are certainly what they are. I'm I am optimistic at this point that Metronet has chosen to really work with us in partnership and kind of work through a letter of agreement. And, you know, we we build that accountability as best as we can, so unfortunately, that doesn't that doesn't change certain things, but those are what they are, unfortunately. Council, other questions for for Kathy or for Matt on this letter of agreement? Hearing none, I'd accept a resolution.
Mayor, we actually have a motion on this. It was moved by John. Moved by John.
Wait, it went on so long, I I forgot that we'd moved in second. Been moved in seconded. If there's no further discussion, will the council please vote?
Councilman McCoy, are you able to click in your vote?
I I am, I having a bit of hesitation here, but.
Item passes five to zero. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Matt. Good discussion and looking forward to all of us working collaboratively together on this significant investment. So appreciate your effort. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to action item number four now, which is a resolution approving the final plot of Angel Park, plot number eight. Jill?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So what you have in front of you is a resolution for Angel Platt eight. So this is, the applicant has purchased two lots with the intention to build a single-family home. It's lots 20 and 21. This is off of Winston Drive, and it backs up to the Green Belt here. Everything in the comment letter has been taken care of. The utilities are going to be the the water line will be removed back to the main, and then the sanitary will be back to the curb for whichever one they're not going to use because those are stubbed in now. It could lead to problems in the future, so they've asked for those to be removed. They're going to do that. Everything else in the comment letter has been addressed and taken care of, so staff recommends approval on this item.
Questions, counsel, for Jill?
Move the resolution. Second.
Second. Jill, quick question.
Well, hold on here. It's moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion, Eric?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Quick question. Are they planning on building one home on both the lots? Or what's 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 the the reason for this, or they're going to not build on another? What's the plan?
Right, they they are going to build one single-family home on both lots. So with that, I, a lot of the lots and the homes in this area, if you remember, there was the, some of the homes back here were in the home show. They are large lots with large homes, so it will most likely be substantial. There's not building plans in yet. But when when there's the property line in the middle here, they run into a lot of fire separation issues and extra building code things that come into play. So just getting rid of this lot line is really what they're doing to create one large lot to build one single-family home on.
Other questions, counsel, for further discussion? Hearing none, will the council please vote? Item passes five to zero. Jill, thank you. That's going to, the area is really coming together well out there, and this will be a nice addition to that. So thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing that unfold for us. Okay, we'll move to discussion items now, and we're going to talk about 2020, 2021 Clive Strategic Plan Update. Matt's going to lead us.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a brief update. Tonight, every quarter, we give you, provide an update on the Clive Strategic Plan that you just recently updated and kind of where we're at on some of those priority items. Just going to hit a few highlights tonight and see what questions you have, and go from there. Just a couple of things I wanted to note. We're fully into budget season, budget development season with the staff, and just wanted to follow up on that. We'll be working on that item pretty extensively over the next couple of months. I know I touched base with all of you kind of regarding the city's financial strategy here going into the CIP and budget season. So that item is moving along. What you'll hear at your next meeting, which will be the CIP work session in two weeks on the night of November 5th at 6 o'clock, we'll be hitting a number of items that are on your strategic planning list, including Lanan Park and others related to the CIP and Indian Hills Woods and other park areas. Also, on October 31st, with the tour, the new West Gate Bridge ribbon cutting, and then the Alice's Road Park tour to talk a little bit about, you know, potential development opportunities with that, as well as the park investment. So a lot of things coming up related to infrastructure here in the short term. Those are being worked on, and then particularly right now, the work on the planning projects, whether it's the 86th Street Neighborhoods, District One work, or the University Avenue Corridor work with the City of West Des Moines. I know I shared some dates here for kind of a save the date in later in November of a joint work session with the City of West Des Moines that we're looking at doing. More details to come on that, hopefully here very soon, on that planning project. And of course, a lot of work related to facilities, whether it's the public safety facility, and then some preliminary conceptual work, which we hope to be bringing a scope of services forward to you related to the City Hall Library, security, and other remodeling forward here in the, probably by your December meeting for your consideration. And then, of course, tonight with your actions related to Metronet and conversations we had at the last meeting related to the community broadband vision. Those items have been moving forward as well. The last one I'll mention as a highlight is the regional water discussions. I know my weekly update to you last week, I shared that the Des Moines Water Works is looking, looking at a 15% rate increase for their wholesale customers that have purchase capacity in the coming year, and this is part of a balancing that they're looking at doing with those customers that they were not cost recovering based on certain calculations that they put together for their cost-of-service study. And most of those were wholesale customers that they that they were showing that they were not recovering their full costs for versus other customers, like their wholesale customers that with storage and other customers like within the City of Des Moines, that they were recovering more cost, more revenue than what the costs were. So the regional governance, water governance discussion is is still very important because it's important, as I know the councils talked a number of times about having a seat at the table in those conversations. Of course, you know, we're at the mercy of the Des Moines Water Works Board on those decisions related to the water that we purchase. I am optimistic on those discussions right now. They they took a pretty substantial pause when the pandemic started, but I know the mayor and I have been in conversations with some of our other suburban communities and actually see some light at at the end of the tunnel of those conversations, starting to reignite a really truly a regional setup that is beneficial from a rate perspective for the City of Clive long term. It could also benefit us in terms of return on investment of the excess purchase capacity that we currently have and seeing a an adequate, sufficient return on that, and then also providing Clive a seat at the table as well as others. So I'm optimistic. I know you've heard me say that before. But well, this is some of the things that are happening related to some of the Des Moines Water Works decisions right now are going to push some of these conversations forward faster. Whether that's their strategy or not, I can't speak to, but I think I'm hopeful that later this year and early in 202021, we're able to bring some more information back on that. But, Your Honor, I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that, but I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that at the end.
Well, I I share your optimism on things moving forward. It's it's starting to coalesce down to a couple of factors, which I think are hopefully workable for us. So stay tuned. It's just, it's still going to take time, though, and unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball on that. But again, I remain optimistic.
And now, Your Honor, happy to answer any questions on any updates to related strategic planning items.
Counsel questions, areas of interest? Well, Matt, thank you. We continue to make progress on a lot of things, and and, you know, we just went through this planning, so grateful for that process, and I think we we are well prepared to move forward for the next number of years. So appreciate your update tonight. With that, we'll move to reports, and Pete, I want to start down with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So happy to report that census activities have now been completed. The courts made the decision that the bureau could end their enumerating and can now move into checking the totals. The self-reported or the self-resply number is now the one that I'm really happy to share. We ended up at 80.7, still tied with Urbendale for the best in the state of Iowa for municipalities over 10,000 people. That's a great mark. It's better than the 78.4% we achieved in 2010. So I still remain confident that because Clive residents did what they were supposed to do, that we're going to have a very, very accurate count for our city, which will translate into many funding advantages for the city for at least another decade. Second, there are a couple of videos Matt's going to share with folks in your Friday email. One is going to be sort of our beggars' night video with the do's and don'ts of how you can safely do it if you choose to participate. One thing we want to emphasize is that if you are sick or if you're high risk, that you should know that you can absolutely not participate. You should not participate, but if you are healthy and it's safe for you to do so, there are some key things that we can all do to make sure that this is a fun night and a safe night that doesn't end up causing bigger problems. So I'd encourage you to check that out. The second video is a wonderful video that our friends at DCI put together on withdrawn images from the ribbon cutting. So I think you'll all enjoy that quite a bit. We've been sharing a lot of this on our social media platforms as well. We are in the midst of a partnership right now with some students at Indian Hills Junior High on some murals and stencils that we can use to raise awareness about what should and should not go into storm sewers. We'll be sharing some of those designs with staff and with all of you in the weeks ahead with the goal, hopefully, if we get an appropriate design, that we can actually deploy some of these in the city and use it as a way to raise awareness and build education around residents of businesses about what goes in the storm sewer, ultimately making its way to that place we love, the Green Belt and Walnut Creek. Few small ones, then, to finish up. One, we've had some winter weather already. We know more could be on the way maybe very soon. And so we're going to fire up our winter weather machine again and make sure folks know that if anytime you see snow or ice starting to fall, people need to get those vehicles off the streets so that we, our operators, can get around and get our streets cleared and keep up Clive's great reputation for some of the best snow clearing in the entire metro. In the coming weeks, also, you should look for a notice about a neighborhood meeting we'll have with the petitioners who submitted petition last winter about the intersection there at Berkshire and Douglas. We do have a final report now that we'll be sharing with them to get their feedback. I've also reached out to the Waukees Schools because Shuler Elementary is right at that intersection, so we'll have more to share on that soon. I want to give a shout out to our friends or my colleagues at the Police Department. They have been very busy with their communications to the entire community over the past two weeks. They've already started on sort of the soft launch of the K-9 fundraising, which has been successful for that program. You might have seen the pink and white outrolling around town. They've done a wonderful job communicating about why they do that, but then also finding other organizations that are affirmed and validated and uplifted because the PD has taken this step. So the Coen Walk again will have a way for our our cruiser to be featured, and a lot of other fun things like partnering with a local baseball team has already been accomplished, and I expect more of that here through the month of October. Great job by the PD team. Finally, very happy to report that as we continue to think about encouraging people to stay strong, look out for each other, do the right thing, and in the course of the pandemic, we've sold another batch of gray Green Belt Goat Mask T-shirts, signs, and and face coverings. We're now ready to make another $900 contribution to Clive Community Services, if that's equivalent to what we did with our first contribution. So pushing up into some very positive numbers, and we know that they are appreciated by Clive Community Services and all the families they serve.
Pete, thank you. Great work there. Really glad to hear about this second round of of goat memorabilia. Pretty cool stuff. And I did enjoy the 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 drone footage from the groundbreaking. That's just such a great tool, so I hope that all of you can enjoy that as well. Counsel, other questions for Pete? Pete, thank you. Ted, let's move over to you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, sir. Eric?
Yeah, bear with me. I've got a couple of things for everybody here. Had a meeting with the Community Advisory Committee. That's the 86th Street community-based organization that's going to be offering advice to the consultants that it's working on the plan there. Really, the key fundamentals that we'll be advising on will be developments, stormwater management, Lanan Park, what we do with Diamond after we make the move to our new safety facility, land use zoning, the Green Belt Trail. land use zoning, the Green Belt Trail. If anyone would like to take a look at that website, it's www.creatyclive.com. And all feedback is appreciated. Also had two meetings with the Clive Fire Department Strategic Planning Session where we essentially as community members were educated on the various procedures with Clive Fire. We provide input on the community priorities and community expectations to, I thought Clive Fire did a really nice job on that. Also attended Catch Des Moines, our CVB board meeting right there. As everybody knows, Des Moines has been hit hard over a hundred million dollars in economic losses. Over a hundred and eighty event cancellations. So very, very difficult. Catch Des Moines and Greg and his staff have done a great job in balancing that with reducing expenditures over thirty percent. And their revenues are higher than the budget, a hundred and twenty-nine percent with that reduced budget right there. So really trying to maximize everything they have without filling positions, taking pay cuts, reducing all these expenditures right there. So really tightening the belt. Good news, a couple of good things as we've, we all probably have seen that the two thousand twenty-three NCAA tournaments be held in Des Moines. So that's great news. Very, very positive right there. And as we look to be in the regular till every three, four years for that. So very, very positive for Des Moines. Also Central Our Water Trails was named the best thing to happen to Iowa in two thousand twenty. So very positive right there. Last but not least, attended a, let's see, Clive Chamber event as well. So that's it.
Eric, thank you. Questions for counsel? A lot of good things going on. John?
Yeah, one more quick, I'm sorry, Mayor. One more quick thing if I could. One of the things we also did with Catch Twenty-two is we changed the reserve fund to a twenty-eight percent from the current twenty-three percent in light of COVID and kind of how it's affected CVB, we felt it was prudent to get close to matching up with what the reserve funds are in various cities in that twenty to thirty percent. So we did move and vote to boost our reserve funds up as well.
Okay, thank you, Eric. John will move to you.
Nothing tonight.
Susan?
Sorry, couldn't get my microphone on. On Monday, the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority met and I'd just like to credit Clive for an excellent presentation and they responded to a lot of great questions there. And soon you'll be receiving the proposed agreement for continuing to fund coordination support for that Watershed Management Authority. So watch for that.
Susan, do you want?
The only question I have. John, yeah, go ahead, John. Sorry.
I was just wondering if Susan wanted to comment on Bravo?
Well, you mean in regard to the gala or?
Well, both, their current reduction in staff, their, their allocation to the agencies and so forth.
Yeah. They've, much like we heard from the CVB, Bravo has undergone a reduction in staff. They've worked to identify all kinds of cost savings. They've been supporting the many different entities that are funded through Bravo by enabling them to request their funding early. And so that has definitely been appreciated. But we've had to notify everyone of the of a couple of things, one being the just overall reduction in revenues. So to be prepared for that, they've stopped the public art part of the funding for now. And they have basically gone to more of a cash basis for funding for the upcoming year. Instead of trying to rely so much on projections, which are really hard to know. So we feel that, that, you know, that was something that was given a lot of discussion and consideration before that approach was adopted. But I think you can understand how that makes sense to do that. And then there will not be a gala in two thousand twenty-one unless it ends up being later in the year. But they're wanting to kind of wait to announce all of that with a proposal for funding to continue to come in from sponsors that have funded the effort in the past. And so we are looking to this as a potential learning opportunity, maybe some ways that the whole gala can be improved in the future. You know, to an extent, it's been a bit of a break even event. Hasn't generated as much funding as some people might hope to support various entities. And so there will be a lot of consideration given to that in the future. I'm making sure that we're celebrating the, the right things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks, Susan. I would need to share some good news that I neglected to mention earlier. The Metro Waste bids came in about three million under the budgeted amount for the MRF. So the recycling facility. So that was really good news. And you probably saw that, that Metro Waste is working very hard to make trees available to all the metro communities to replace those that were destroyed during the duration. So those are two good news items I should have shared, but did not.
Well, John, thank you for sharing those. And Susan, thank you for the, for the update on Bravo. I think to the point, you know, Bravo doesn't really have any staff to cut. Yeah, what are they, three? Maybe, maybe four as a stretch. I haven't been close for a while. But to hear from Greg Edwards the other night while at our last council meeting, I don't think I've ever seen him so serious in the nearly twenty years that I've known him. But truly, this is having an impact, an incredible impact, particularly on hospitality events, arts, culture, heritage organizations that depend on this funding for their operation. And so I know, and I've seen, like we've all seen, you know, what Sally Dix with her leadership and working with the board there are trying to do as much as possible to remain viable and to, and to remain being a solution for these organizations that really desperately need significant levels of funding that has historically come from Bravo. So I think we can all be proud in what we, what we've built up to now. I'm just going to have to build it back up again. So Susan, thank you for that. The only thing I would add is that, is that going forward, the giraffe that is behind you, you might want to bring up and sit next to you. And, you know, he can be a part of the party that way.
I will definitely keep that in mind.
Say something about that. That's great. Susan, thank you. Michael, anything for the good of the order?
I do. A little addition to Pete's announcement on the additional nine hundred dollars for the mask. Doug and I can assure you, we've, we've had lengthy discussions with the goats and they don't believe it's just a one-sided deal. So the royalties, they're taking care of them very well. Parks Department is doing a great job with them. They're extremely happy to provide that opportunity to the city. I think it's a win-win for them and for the city.
So as their agent, you need to speak to that. You're representing them well.
That's correct. The royalties are being paid very well to them.
Anything else, Michael?
That's it, sir.
Okay, Madam Counsel?
Nothing further, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina? Matt, we'll go to you.
May your honor, just to follow up on the Bravo conversation, I have invited Sally Dix to come to the next regular meeting of the council in November to provide an update similar to what Greg Edwards did at the last meeting related to CVB. So she'll be able to share even more to the conversation that we just had here about where Bravo is at. So extended that invite and she will be there, will be here in November. Couple of things, just again, reminders of some calendar items. October thirty-first at nine AM, the West Gate ribbon cutting, which will be pretty brief, really just a picture. We want to make sure we get a picture of that and give you all an opportunity to walk around that bridge a bit. Pretty happy with how that turned out. And for the Public Works Team and Rachel and Jeff May, who worked really hard on that project and really wrapping that up. Of course, that bridge doesn't go to a road on the other side yet, although you'll see quite a bit of grading happening by the developers on the other side of the Little Walnut Creek. And that will be a road there next year for that crossing. So we'll be there briefly and then head over to the Alice's Road Park off of just west of Alice's Road there to have the, the really focused conversation on talking about this concept related to development opportunities and how that relates to the parkland that we have in that area. And Doug and Richard will be having a conversation with you all on the Parks Board. We'll also be there as well to discuss that in lead up to your CIP work session on November fifth at six PM to then kind of get your direction on where we head in the future for Alice's Road Park. So pretty excited about that. Hopefully, at least the long-term forecast looks to like some better weather on October thirty-first. So we're hopeful there. Last thing then, two more of the things that I'd like to mention, we did reopen the lobbies and the library this week. Do in terms of the public access again, I will, I do, I will report that the, the positive case that we thought we had with Leisure Services staff here and was going to necessitate the closure of the library temporarily. We did find out that that actually was a false positive. It was a Test Iowa false positive, unfortunately. And so we have reopened the library today. And we'll keep that open. We, we do have that person getting retested just to double check again. But we have reopened the library today. So just wanted to make you all aware of that. And then let.
Matt may I make a comment on that? But I, I do want to thank you and the staff on this one. This is a tough one. We're all dealing with at our own workplaces, right? The decisions of what to do and what not to do. And there is no playbook. And you can look at all the sites and CDC and Polk County and Iowa and Nash, WHO and, you know, so to take those precautions and it be a oops, I would personally, and I only speak for me, but would rather see that. And it's not an easy decision for you or for staff to make. But I do appreciate you making those decisions.
Thank you. Yes, it, it has been a evolving decision-making process. And I agree, Councilmember McCoy, I would much rather side on, be more cautious when those situations do come up. And as you could see this morning, we were able to pivot fairly quickly. We've got pretty good communication systems for library in particular, and we had a few folks in the library this afternoon. So it's with the communications, whether it's newsletters, websites, social media, we're able to turn things around pretty quickly. And I think that's a testament to Pete and the Leisure Services staff of the way we've kind of set these things up. So I appreciate that, Councilmember McCoy. The last thing that I'll mention then too is just a reminder, a little bit of a change this year with our voting precincts for Clive Precincts two and three, actually being in a location in West Des Moines at the Ron Pearson Center rather than Faith Lutheran Church. Still haven't gotten confirmation from Polk County Auditor on the reason for that change. But we will, we have been communicating that pretty regularly and you will see that in the newsletter. The printed city newsletter should hit all of our residents before Election Day. And so we're featuring that in there as well to do everything we can to get the word out for that precinct change. And, and then as a reminder that Diamond Public Safety and City Hall are precincts one and four, those haven't changed. And then the Dallas County Precinct at Harlan Presbyterian is still the same. So that's all I'll have, your honor, unless you have any questions.
Matt, thank you. Counsel, questions for Matt? Okay, Matt, thank you. Matthew, any correspondence?
All correspondence were provided in your packet.
Thank you, Matthew. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing nothing, I'm going to adjourn us at seven forty-four PM. Thank you all. Have a great weekend, end of the week and a great weekend. Thank you.